Welcome to the May 9, 2017 Town Council meeting. Full open meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Now we'll take a moment of silence, you can use it as you wish. Thank you. In accordance with the Mass General laws, we are taping the meeting in Elk County. Is anybody else taping the meeting? Nobody. All right, perfect. All the comments tonight, we have none. Council response? None. Town manager report, number five.
I think number five really passed.
That did go quick. It was kind of like one to five really, we skipped everything in between.
So, good evening. Three new police officers have joined the East Long Meadow Police Force. Eric Ainsworth, Anthony D'Anne, and Jonathan Gaines graduated from the police academy on Friday, May 5, and were sworn in Monday morning. Welcome, Officers Ainsworth, D'Anne, and Gaines. Great renewal, young guys, a lot of energy, very proud to be joining the force and contributing to their community. The police chief and director of Public Works have been working on a plan to improve traffic flow and decrease accidents in the Maple Street portion of the Rotary. They will reduce the lanes on Maple leading into the Rotary from two to one. They plan to have information in the newspaper to be sure the change is publicized. I've attached a GIS rendering, and you've got it here. What they're going to be doing is the red dots are actually barrels that they're going to be putting to close off that, I think it's the left lane, and just leave the right lane open. So, it's a start to trying to address that. There was an accident there again today, there's one just about every day.
What's the thought process?
I'm sorry?
What is the thought process on that? Just to reduce the number going into the Rotary at a given time?
Well, it's because you get the traffic that crosses like this, Eric, so you're in the left and right, and somebody in the right's trying to go around the Rotary this way, and somebody in the left is trying to go up Summers or whatever.
Rather than using the appropriate lane.
Right. And there's also, if, and I go up to the fire and police a lot, so I use that left, that right-hand lane. If there's a big vehicle in the left-hand lane, you can't see to pull out, even if you're not going around the Rotary. Somebody that's not aware of what's going on will go through thinking, well, I'm just going to the right, and they don't see the traffic coming around because it's scattering all over. So, it's worth a shot.
Interesting to see if it works.
Yeah.
The only worry I have is I know, I think with time it backs up Maple.
Yeah. When high school gets out, it will be, that's why they're starting it at the end of the school year to see if it's worth doing some more investigating.
See how it goes.
We continue to have is, I'm sorry?
I said coming from someone to get hit in that crosswalk, I know how that would probably have been better.
As a pedestrian?
Yeah.
That's even worse, they don't have a lane for.
No. They did, she made a lane, right over me.
We continue to have issues with service from our trash company, Republic. The health director and I once again spoke with representatives from Republic. We have notified them that we will be instituting the fine provision of our trash contract immediately if we continue to receive complaints. They've assured us that they're aggressively working to address the issues residents are encountering. Has to do with a lot of backup of not picking up on one day, so the next day, they now go get those, but they have more because they're a daily, it's just not catching up. Glass in the road from the trucks, trash in the road from the trucks. It's been quite a few conversations about trash. The Public Works Department is working on having two showers with hot and cold water at Pine Knoll in time for the opening of camp next month. A determination for need for additional showers will be made after the camp season, summer, and I expect will be addressed in the capital project request for next year's budget. I've attached a copy of the section of the health code related to showers for public swimming pools for your information. Capacity of Pine Knoll is 75 bathers. It is 40 per, right, for each shower. So, it's not a done issue, but in order to get things opened right now, we need to get that done the fastest way that we can. Jackhammering all the floor and pouring was not doable in that time. After discussion with the Director of Planning and Community Development and the building official, it's agreed that the building official needs to prioritize sign enforcement along with all the other duties he needs to catch up on. We will continue removing all illegal lawn signs that are an easy first level of enforcement, but we'll be holding off enforcement of more complex violations while we all work on the best way to review the sign regulations for practicality, consistency, and fairness. In becoming familiar with the sign regulations, I have found them to be somewhat difficult to understand in a minister on a number of levels, and therefore feel a review of the regulations is needed as a step in addressing our priority of being a business-friendly community.
I agree 100 percent.
I'm sorry?
I agree 100 percent.
Oh, good.
I have some concerns with that as well, as I think you've expressed pretty well here, and it hasn't been enforced for years.
It hasn't been enforced, and in order for the building official to now, we can't do spot enforcement, or we'll end up in court. So, to do them all, he needs to go back and see who has permits. A lot of them are, and I drove down, down a couple of streets and said, well, why is it permitted there and it's not permitted there? And it's because one is the industrial garden area, the other is just straight commercial, you know, it's, the signs are, regulations are different for each of those sections, but the guy on the street wouldn't have any idea. And if we want to be business-friendly, on, especially like Shaker Road, that is a, you know, real traffic area, do we want to have people have to look this way rather than see the sign as they're coming up to the building? You know, there's, there's a lot of things that we just need to look at that, he said the sign regulations are a whole book themselves.
So, what I was hoping is in your revisions or evaluation, if there was some way that maybe through the chambers or business associations, you could include the stakeholders in that, and it might help with buying.
That's a great idea.
Because eventually, you're going to come up with what standard is going to be applied, and there's going to be somebody unhappy.
Yeah. Well, it'll all have to.
If we can involve the stakeholders at least in the process, then maybe we'll get buy-in through the, through them as well.
I think consistency and looking at it for, from a business perspective really will help them be on board. It'll all have to go through the planning process and all of that, so it won't be something that will be fixed right away, that's why I've told Kevin, of all the things that you need to spend, I mean, that would be a full-time job all by itself, so we're going to hold off on that. I wanted to give kudos to students and teachers at Mountain View and Maple Shade Schools for their Arbor Day celebrations. There were tree-related band and chorus music, there was tree-related band and chorus music, student poetry, all hosted by great student MCs. It was insight into why there is such great community spirit in East Long Meadow, a job well done by the students. It was really heartwarming to see them, all the great little poems, it was just excellent. Reminders, I forwarded to you all an invitation to the regional select board meeting on May 31 at 7:00, at room A15, Long Meadow High School. It's in the Bliss Road entrance that you have to go through. And the tentative agenda is task force on retiree benefits and purchase of streetlights. Memorial Day, you have an agenda for that, it'll be celebrated on Monday, May 29. And representatives of 330 Chestnut Street, also known as Package Machinery, are planning to present their concept to the council at your next meeting of May 23. I'm not sure that's the best meeting, if, if we're having a public hearing on the budget at 7:00, if they could maybe be brought up to the beginning of the agenda. We don't want to cut them off, but we don't also want them going through a whole public hearing on the budget, so would it be better to have them?
Will you have anything that may?
Would I have?
Would you have a report to do that night? Not really, right? What do you think?
I think my public hearing is going to be my report.
My point is if we're just really, realistically, the meeting's for the public hearing, technically, right?
Which would start at 7:00, so we could, you could take them out of order.
First.
Yeah. You just leave them where they are, and then you just take that item out of order. So, I will, I'll get back to them because they said, are we still all set? I said, why don't you hold on, I want to make sure the council's all set with that. So, if, if you think that'll work, then we'll do that. Also attached is a copy of a letter from the Board of Assessors that we can discuss under item 9D of tonight's agenda, which has to do with the budget. I think you all received that letter before, but just, that's, that's all I have, respectfully submitted, Denise DeMar.
All right. Thank you. So, now we have approval of minutes, and we make a motion to approve the April 25, 2017 open session minutes as submitted. Moving second in to any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we make a motion to approve the open session minutes of the May 3, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move in second in. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communication correspondence or announcements?
No, because the communications correspondence and announcements was covered in the thesis. It was just the memorial, the communications correspondence and announcements, we just had the Memorial Day invitation, and the Town Council select for regional meeting. Those are the only two things that we really had.
Could we just, for the, the folks listening on Elk County, just repeat when the, nope, when the public hearing on the budget is?
We'll be discussing that further. I don't think you've all set the date for certain. Well, no, it has been, it's been posted.
We did, because it had to be in the paper.
Right, I understand.
It'll be May 23 at 7:00 here. So, we will begin our meeting at 6:00, reset it at 7:00 to help have the public hearing, and then go back to the, to the council's agenda.
Thank you.
Then we have public hearings. None, right? Not tonight? Orders of day, we have, it's actually three license, well, four licensing matters. So, we have a one-day beer and wine license from St. Luke's Orthodox Church from May 20, 2017. The insurance is on file, it's going to be, I couldn't give the hours. So, I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the one-day liquor license.
Quick comment, are they asking for a waiver of the $10 fee, or did they pay that? I'm just trying to pick that up and then.
No, they didn't ask for a waiver.
Okay, so, what can that box?
If, if the, the hours are not defined in the application, is, is there a?
We can define.
It looked like, it looked like Marge called and left a message to ask.
What their hours were going to be.
I mean, what dated, what's this dated? Tuesday, May 2. She called last, I'm sure she's heard from them.
Oh, if she did, she would have let town know. This is with the town. Did she let you know about that? The hours about, the hours for the, with the license?
Can we approve it not to exceed?
I mean, what do they typically ask in the past, do we know? Do you have any, any requirements?
I think it just has to fit within guideline of certain hours, am I correct, Denise?
I'm sorry?
That a one-day liquor license just has to fit within parameters of, of hours, like any other liquor license, is that correct?
I would think, but I'm, I'm just going by, I'm concerned.
So, then I would, based on that, I would, I'd motion that we approve it conditional upon the hours being within those defined by law.
Is there a second?
I second. It makes sense.
Moving second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a one-day liquor license for St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, 9960, for a full liquor license for May 24, from 4:30 to 6:30 at St. Michael's Community Center, 53 Summers Road. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
And they are asking for a fee waiver?
Yes.
Correct. Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a one, one-day beer and wine license for the Masonic Temple, Saturday, June 3, 5:00 PM to midnight, and then there is also on Saturday, June 24, from 6:00 to 11:00. They have liability insurance.
So, just a question, do we have to approve their entertainment that they're asking on here, or is that automatic for their facility?
That's a good question, because they do, they specifically request through the DJ.
Yeah, the other one above says a, consists of a band.
Band.
For a birthday party, so we don't know what the size of the band is and everything.
Yeah, they're asking for the liquor license. We have to approve that.
Let's see what they put on their application.
This is general information.
How council's that? I mean, their existence is a matter of right, are they allowed to have entertainment without liquor licenses or bands? I'm thinking we probably have to approve that.
We can approve both as, as a one-time event.
Yeah. I see you going, yeah, I'm thinking too. Jim's not here yet.
He's not.
Can we table this just later?
Those are in June, we have time on those.
Maybe we can table it later in the meeting, if he shows up and asks for the questions.
He's coming, because there's even no discussion we have to have.
Yeah, we're, we're coming, that's right.
Jim will be here.
So, we can maybe bring it up in conversation to see whether, the fact that they're telling us to have entertainment.
We're going to have to cancel in June, until we have time.
We have time. All right, so I'll suggest we table those two until we get the answer on the entertainment portion.
There's nothing else to table for now. Everything all right with it?
Yeah.
Requested appropriation of funds from the community preservation, historical preservation account for Green Lawn Cemetery Community Preservation Committee. So, Denise, you have a little bit on this, right?
I do. This is a great idea that they have, the community preservation folks, however, they have to have, under Mass General law, they're supposed to have a review with all the different committees, departments in town as to what their plan is, and they're supposed to present that, have a public hearing. And I spoke to the previous chairman, Ralph Page, about that. He said they hadn't done that, but they would be doing that before they came, before you to finish this, and I don't know that you've had that, so.
Come on up, Ralph.
I looked at the minutes, there's no minutes online.
Good evening. As chairman of the Community Preservation Committee at the time that this was submitted, we do hold public meetings with regards to this. We typically open up for applications in November, application period goes through usually January. We had based this before because everything had to be in for the annual town meeting. So, Green Lawn Cemetery, Tony Zampacini from the Historical Commission gave us his application. We reviewed it at multiple meetings. They do have a restriction for historical purposes already on Green Lawn Cemetery, because community preservation's already paid for the fencing around it. So, we asked him specifically to supply us with multiple estimates for gravestone repair. He went through, correct me if I'm wrong.
He's here, right?
I'm right here.
Come on up.
I believe it was Preservation Coalition, where you received the names for the people to restore the actual gravestones.
So, there's only like a handful of people that do this, correct?
There's only a handful.
I mean, we talked about this, but I just, for, the record is like a handful of people, correct?
So, our committee, instead of looking at all the gravestones that need it, said, let's limit this down, I believe 23 of them you brought in front of us. They took a tour of the historic part of Green Lawn, and I just simply said, you know, give me a price on the ones that really need the work the most. And he went around, he chose like 23, and they're desperate when they're repaired, and those are the ones, the obelisks, monuments on the base, they're cracked, they're unstable, they're like anywhere from 150 to 200 years old. We have to act.
With, with this?
I don't know how familiar are we with CPC. There's four categories in community preservation, there's historical.
Ralph, I don't want, I don't want to interrupt, but I believe, Denise, am I incorrect in saying that your question was in response to whether they had followed the format under the process?
Under, under Mass General law.
So, I think the question we're trying to get to is, can we even address this tonight because we haven't gone through the process as defined by Mass General law?
To my knowledge, we've done everything under Mass General law.
There's no public hearing, and it says public hearing in the Mass General, you all have a copy of this, it's not highlighted, but it says a public hearing. With two weeks' notice, your, your meeting is not a public hearing.
Then we should go back and change everything we've done, because we've used a public meeting, and these have been voted on over multiple years.
There's also, the budget is 250,000.
If that went to the town meeting, that is a public hearing, no?
Say that again?
If it goes to town meeting, isn't, does that count as a public hearing?
No.
No, a public hearing is especially noted, a public hearing for what they're going to do with their money, funding for the year, which is 250,000.
Which was always part of the budget, public hearing.
So, that makes sense.
So, it was, in the past, it did go through a public hearing, Ralph.
Say that again?
It was part of the budget, public hearing, there was the budget, capital.
I think that's exactly, I mean, this is part of the budget process where it comes to town. We're, we're recommending to Town Council, if Town Council chooses to go forwards with it, I assume.
So, you weren't looking for a vote tonight?
Oh, yeah, I was. Well, we might have been. My job as Community Preservation Committee was to present it to the board, let you know why the community preservation backs this. Like I said, with the process changing from town meeting to this, again, it may be something that the Town Council has to hold a public hearing.
But we are holding a budget public hearing on the 23rd. Is that different?
It specifically says the commission is supposed to hold a public hearing with, with the presentation of all the projects that they want to fund for the year, including those for historical, for the different categories that you're supposed to. It's, it's Section 5B1, the second paragraph.
So, why don't we, why don't we?
I have a question.
Table a vote on this until that gets worked out? Yes.
Do you have a projected start date of, you know, starting this project?
I talked to them the other day, it could be this summer.
This summer?
Soon, maybe July.
Okay, so.
So, we have enough time to comply?
Well, how do we help them resolve this? So, they have to post a public meeting for two weeks' notice, and they have to have that done before our meeting on the 23rd? Does that even, do you have enough time?
No, we can work on the appropriation.
So, we invite the public, yeah.
So, it's just a slight delay, you know, we just have to go through the formality to meet the requirement of law.
Hold your date, hold your date with them, and we'll, we'll work through it, right?
But they have to have had a communication with all these agencies that they list here as to whether they want any, you know, any funding.
Basically, it's like a one-year sort of plan. This year, rec came, so-and-so came, so-and-so came, I don't know how you did that, Ralph, probably.
I took over in November as chair. So, literally, we didn't go through the whole process. Typically, from what I've understood in the past, is an email goes out to different departments, whether it be recreation, or planning, or any of the departments, asking if anyone has any suggested plans. That's how the school committee came to us, capital planning, and said, I don't think we're going to be able to afford the playground sets, maybe you should go through community preservation. And again, I know Denise said there's 250,000 as a whole in there, but there's specific funds at.
For each category or whatever.
10%, and, yeah, 5%. I'm here to help you, but we want to make you.
I know, we just had Senator Lesser in here, and I noticed nothing was mentioned. They've decided to cut funding down to only 15% matching this year. For when they originally did this, and we jumped on it, they were saying, no, 100% match. So, we're, we went from 100 all the way down to 15% now. So, going forwards into, this past year, we received 50,000 from the state, it's probably going to be, I mean, that was a 25% match, so it's going to be even less than that going forwards.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with the project, you know what I mean? I don't have an issue necessarily with the project, they just want to make sure we cover all the bases and.
So, you'll, you'll work with them to get it?
Absolutely. Yeah. And if there are, I mean, if the email didn't go out this year, and you indicated before that it had not, you know, to the different.
I didn't send one out.
So, you know, that needs to go, and then, then you come with a whole plan, I'll, I'm here to help. And Marge will post your minutes, they're not posting, so I couldn't even do anything, I only saw your agendas, minutes are not posted online, on our, online, so.
Jeannie's been posted.
Nope. So, I, again, we can help you with that as well. I talked to Marge about that.
We have them all.
I'm sure you do, but I couldn't see them, so I couldn't vouch for you did, you know, whatever. So, we can figure it out.
And he's not going to start till summer, right? I mean, that's basically what we're looking at, starting the thing, so we have a little bit of.
Hopefully, hopefully it can start this summer.
Okay.
There was one other project that CPC had made a recommendation on, should we hold a joint public hearing, and that was expenditure of $700,000 for the possible purchase of the property in the center of town.
Where the Trinity Pole is.
I'll, Denise, same time.
That would be, well, it could go to the public hearing, and you can see what comments there would be, but that, that would mean that you'd have to borrow funds.
And I don't think that's going to fly.
And you've got, you've got two debt service payments now, one of, what, 600, and one of 500 something now, I don't know that you want to do another.
I think last year, the payment was $132,000 for interest, principal and interest on those bonds.
Yeah. So.
I just want to back up half a conversation ago, we may be under some time constraints, and now it's fiscal year.
So what?
So, we may be under some time constraints at getting the public hearing done and everything, and that would be the fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm sensitive to that.
So, yeah, so, I mean, although we have time, it's.
Not a lot.
Not, yeah, right.
But for them to just put something out there to the departments that need to, so that we can check that box, and they're, they're good at responding quickly, especially if you might be offering them a little bit of money. If they have a project, or something that was in capital plan that, that didn't get done, that might be a small project, you might get more than just that one project this year. And if, if you want to go forward, then 7:50, let's sit and talk through it.
Well, like I said, that was a vote of the board and a recommendation, passed five to four to recommend the purchase, so with that, I think they would have to go through a whole public hearing, see where that is, and whether reconsider the vote, or bring it forward to.
Who's the chairman now?
Right at the moment, they haven't voted, the vice chair is George Kingston.
Okay, yeah, I happen to be meeting with him Friday, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
No, we Town Council, we'll bring back the liquor license question.
Yeah, Jim's here, right? He was here.
He's right here.
So, there he is. Jim.
He blends in.
Jim, we got a question for you. Liquor license. Liquor license question.
The Masonic Temple, the two applications, and one says band, the other says DJ. Are they? Are they, the Masonic Temple wants a one-day liquor license.
Yep.
And it says band and DJ for another one. Are we also approving an entertainment, one-day entertainment license as well?
No.
That's the problem, yeah?
They're asking for a liquor license. If they're asking for an entertainment license, they need to file an application for an entertainment license.
Okay, so, and so, if I, I think what they're thinking in their letter, I don't know if you have it there, I think what they're, they're, you know, they're knowing, no one's here from the group, I don't believe, I think they're saying, okay, we're having a liquor license and having a band for a birthday party, and I think by inference, they think by approving one, we might also approve the other. So, they actually have to apply for an entertainment, one-day entertainment license.
The purpose of the entertainment license, yes, is to tell you the number of people that are going to show up, the type of entertainment they're going to have, so that you can determine, or you can ask them your department heads, what security you're going to need to address that circumstance. You know, fifteen years ago, the Eastern States Exposition is part of one of their shows, had Destiny's Child. They booked Destiny's Child four years in advance when it was a nothing group. When it came to the Eastern States Exposition that year as part of the fair, it was the number one group in the country, and the people that showed up, it was overwhelming. So, that's where I learned my lesson on entertainment license. You really have to understand what it is that's happening, and who the event or the performers are going to be, so that you can determine, or ask your buyer of the lease departments, what do we need for personnel, or maybe even the DPW to say, what do we need for cleanup, or what do we need to block off roads and whatnot. So, you need, in most instances, maybe not for this, but in most instances, you really need to have an application explaining what the entertainment is that you're being asked to approve. And that would be my suggestion for any entertainment license, that you specify specific-
So, that in mind, can we approve the liquor license and have them reapply for an entertainment license?
Sure, do we have an entertainment license out, one-day permit in our inventory? No, we're about to create one.
We do, we have.
The development of standardized applications was something you mentioned a while ago, that's already in the works, right?
Marge has pretty much done all of them as she goes through.
Okay.
The first time she does it, she creates the form, it's a fillable form online.
So, these, in the future, these will be, whether exactly they're applying for, will be much more clear because of the form.
They'll fill in everything.
They want this ten dollar fee, and they want this, another fee on top of that, and we can get it approved.
They're both in June, to your concern, Mike, they're both in June, we have time if we just want to, if we just want to have the county manager's office.
I would approve the entertainment license so that they can still have their, I mean, excuse me, the liquor license, and make, you know, put them on notice that they need to apply for an entertainment license, that way they can still plan or function with or without entertainment, so they're not jammed up, you know, so. If, if the rest of you are in agreement with that, so.
I could live without it.
We're talking about a baby shower and a birthday party, we're not, it's not Destiny's Child. It's not Destiny's Child. It's a birthday party.
They don't exist anymore, I don't think, is a-
No, they're a defunct, now defunct. Are they?
Yes.
That's fine if you want to make the motion.
Okay, we'll make a motion and approve.
This is not what's going on.
The one-day liquor license for Saturday, June third, two thousand seventeen, that's a beer and wine license, for Masonic Temple, four, forty-three Chestnut Street, and a baby shower, it feels like a license, right?
It's a one-year.
I just want to know if it's a full one.
Possibly not to include an entertainment license until applied for?
No, they're both beer and wine, so that's fine.
One-day beer and wine is for the baby shower from six to eleven.
There we go. So, approval is contingent upon the fact that they get, or we're not contingent upon that, that they have to be applied separately for the entertainment license?
Right, the entertainment, so it's very clear that we did not approve this band and DJ, but I mean, I'm sure it would be fine, a band is probably not like an eight-piece band, someone like that, but you never know. It's just, it's just that we have this grandfathering that's going to come back to bite us if we don't. Might be destiny, if you have a child, well, better luck, has a reach.
We'll just have to, someone will have to reach out to them and let them know, Marge will take care of that, so.
Tom, Tom or Marge, whatever. So, I'm making a motion to approve the June third, two thousand seventeen, beer and wine liquor license from five to twelve for the Masonic Temple, and June twenty-fourth from six to eleven, beer and wine permit for the Masonic Temple.
So, move it second?
Moved it second, is there any further discussion?
Just one last minute thought on that, is, the only thought I had on this, Mike, is this, is this wise, because then there's no motivation for them to actually file for the entertainment license? They have their beer and wine license.
They're not approved for entertainment. If you're going to, if we're going to do it like this, we peeled out the entertainment portion, if they don't reapply, then they can't have it, and if they do, then-
We'll communicate that.
Yeah, okay. I think they're, they've been very rule-abiding in the past, I don't think there should be any issues. They, they're great, you know, we've never had an issue with them.
Yeah, damn.
So, I'm okay with the motion.
No, that was just a kind of a last-minute thought, we were making the motion.
No, that's fine. All in favor?
I, I-
Oh, no. There we go.
You got her vote, did you?
Yes, that was her vote. Now, we can go to old business, the bylaw for permitting now for past, ah, that's you, Tom, right?
Yeah. Suppose that, I know, I talked to him last week, he's in the process of writing that bylaw?
Well, there are two things. The manager had directed, or suggested at the last meeting, rather than draft the bylaw to look for surrounding communities that might have enacted such a law and to look at that. So, I have prepared both, I have drafted a bylaw with respect to the verification of licenses that's been in effect in West Springfield for about ten years, and then I also drafted one for consideration by the manager, and determined what she feels more appropriate, or if she wishes me to look for more defined language to submit to you, but it, it should come through the manager's office as to what they feel is appropriate, and I'll submit that to the manager when we go forward.
Thank you.
Sale of railroad property for Deer Park. That's that one piece, right, Denise?
It is.
From Connecticut Line to Deer Park, right?
Yes, and there, the, one, the directive of the council was to find out if, if the price was negotiable, and it is not. I know that, that the Community Preservation had, had talked a little bit about possibly proposing to buy it or do something as well, so that'll be part of the conversation that we can have. So, at this point, there's, there's nothing more as far as that. I have another call-in to the railroad to see if it would be up for sale longer than the May date that they had, which is, I think, this Friday, that I have to reply to them. But the council had made a, you had actually voted against purchase, right?
I don't think we ever actually held a vote, I think it was just a consensus.
Do you want to know if there was a possibility?
At the time, we wanted to know if we could get the stretch in between, and that's not, that's quite possible.
Doesn't seem possible, yeah. It's right smack in the middle of a-
Right, so we end up with that chunk that's in the middle, that, really, that piece doing-
That leads to the prisons in Connecticut.
Right, yeah.
Maybe not the best, maybe not the most ideal piece to have anyway.
Yeah, there's not much function for it with just that piece alone.
We can't connect the dots, you know?
Right, exactly.
That other piece, that missing dot, would be the, the more appropriate one to have, and end the trail there rather than right at the Connecticut line, I would say.
Yeah. Okay, easy enough, well, a little more information. Oh, now we're on to the fun part, financial matters. General budget discussion. We'll lose a copy of the budget here, proposed budget.
Listen, it's not, you have, this is an update, it's May ninth, it's today. Sarah and I have been working on it, Sarah mostly, I mean, we've spent a lot of time together lately, I'm really tired of seeing Sarah Monarch. We'll be glad when we're done.
Well, you guys are related, aren't you?
Don't start that rumor, we're not related.
We already fucked that one up.
So, as a courtesy to, we have our rec director here, would it be more appropriate to take the recre-, it's all part of the budget discussion, to take the rec revolving fund first and then, then do the budget pieces?
Sure.
There, there is, as you, as you all are aware, there's, there's no approval needed by the council for revolving funds, however, you do need to be aware of what's going into it. I can tell you that the Recreation Department has had a challenge this year in getting the revolving fund balanced to the point that it needs to be going forward. They've been working very hard on getting that done, so that this year's picture of the revolving fund should be much clearer than it has been in the past. There were much bigger buckets in the past than there are now.
Fair enough. Anything in particular we should know?
Don't be afraid to come on up, buddy.
Yeah, come on up.
You're up.
Most, most department heads come up and-
How's everybody doing?
Good.
I mean, as, as many of you know, we run programs for a little over six thousand participants in town, and through the revolving fund, that's, that's how we do it. So, it's a, a registration-based system, and as Denise mentioned, we've been working to kind of dial it in, to be a little bit more focused on our registrations, and the cost of those registrations, and what they cover, and then in working with Sarah to kind of focus them even further to what they can cover and what should possibly be covered elsewhere. So, I'm comfortable with the budget as it's been presented, it's, you know, as I put it in, we kind of focused all the way to how many kids are playing baseball, and how many kids are playing softball, so I'm, I'm very, very confident in it. But if there's any questions-
Were we not doing that before?
We were doing that by sport, and now with Sarah's help, we've been focused on connecting it to the general ledger, as opposed to just by sport, by sport, by sport.
Spun that to me a little bit.
So, in, in previous years, the revolving fund was, almost looked at as a reserve fund as well, so if we had a program that made money, it would go in, it would stay in the, in the revolving fund. Now, Sarah coming in as our new accountant has assisted the Recreation Department in better understanding with the use of a revolving fund, and that is really not the case. We're not supposed to make money and then save it for future projects, we're supposed to simply just cover the programs. So, that is our focus for this upcoming year, is to simply cover the cost of the programs and just continue to run as many as we can.
So, do you have individual sports that are generating excess revenue, like in the past, you know, if lacrosse did fundraising, and then they were giving the funds to use, so they can't keep those funds for next year's to be used at, at their discretion for their sport? Or are you guys not doing that anymore?
No, so we, we're not taking money from our associations. Sarah's also assisted our associations, if they want to, in setting up a gift account through the town. That way, they have a place to put their money, and I would say most have thought about that, so they're kind of still sticking with their own accounts and going for nonprofit status to kind of still assist the town, but we don't take money from the associations and put it in the revolving fund and save it by any means.
Well, you did.
No.
Never.
No. We would work with our associations-
Because I know, like, I'm just going to use football as an example, was it when I was at the rec meeting, I don't know, probably here now, when I was there, but I know that they raise a significant amount of money for, whatever, football helmets.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with them for like-
How's it work with them buying, like, I know they buy a certain number, can we match that, or?
So, we plan ahead, so we have to buy a football helmet every ten years.
Yeah.
So, we get to use them for ten years. So, right now, we're in a really good spot, because we have plenty of football helmets, but you have to recondition them every two years. Now, the rec department, we recondition them, so we actually pay that cost through our registration fees. But a, a good example with football is, they hadn't had new uniforms in almost ten years, but through the Recreation Department, we couldn't, I guess you could, for lack of a better term, shell out, you know, sixteen thousand dollars for new football uniforms, because you have a hundred kids, that'd be a really, really big registration fee. So, we worked with what we had reserved in the past, and the football association, actually, we paid the bill together. So, that's, you know, a good example of what we do with our, our sport associations, is they raise their funds, and then we might work together to, to purchase a bigger item like a uniform, or twenty helmets, things along those lines.
So, basically, you're just splitting it, but they're half share?
Yeah.
It's half and half.
Yeah, yeah, for, so in the future, we'd have to have a, a little bit more calculated as a plan, because we're not reserving funds going into this upcoming year. So, it might be something where we could either function through a gift account, you know, we could try and get donations to assist us in big purchases like that, you know, the old thermometer in front of the park, you know, kind of idea.
Is there like a replacement plan?
Uh, yeah, so-
Yeah, we have, I don't know, the helmet thing, I know you got to do them every ten years, you recondition them every two years, but like for uniform purchases and that sort of thing, you have a plan that says, you know, three years from now, we need to have X number, and then the fee for whatever individual sport maybe fluctuates based on need?
Yeah, so, we, we had that plan where if we were able to continue to reserve money, any money from that sport would kind of, you could say, build up over a five, six, seven year period, and then, you know, boom, there goes twelve thousand dollars towards the uniforms. In the future, it might be appropriate to set up a stabilization fund for the Recreation Department for possibly those funds to go into, so we may have the ability to continue to save up money for big purchases like that. Or, I mean, the other side, I guess I would be coming in front of you in, you know, five, six, seven years, saying, I need money for football uniforms, only because that, that program itself, a football uniform is, you know, eighty dollars, you know, and right now, our football players play football for a hundred and five dollars for the whole season, you know, and that includes all their registration fees and equipment and things like that, so. In the future, I think we'll have to create a plan to possibly have an account to put funds for that purpose, you know, in ten years for those helmets or for the football uniforms.
Is something that's workable?
Um, yes, in the Recreation revolving account, you are allowed to have up to ten thousand dollars that's undesigned, so you could save up to ten thousand for everything, not per sport.
Got it.
Other alternatives would be a stabilization account that the Town Council would approve for setting up, it would be a two-thirds vote to go in and out, similar to the other one, but you would designate what the purpose of that stabilization was. So, if it wanted to be recreation equipment, then you could, we could do that, you would still have to approve the projects to be paid out of there, it couldn't, it wouldn't just be at the Recreation Director's discretion to be able to do that, it would still be something that would be the Town Council, so that's one way to do it. And you could designate that, you know, I don't know, a dollar from registrations, or whatever would go into there. The other alternative would be, the state does allow you to do an enterprise fund for recreation, so similar to how we're doing it for LCAT, and Water and Sewer, you could do the same kind of thing, and in that, you'd be able to build up reserves, just like the Water and Sewer does, like a vehicle replacement reserve, so you'd be able to do something along the same lines. The caveat with the enterprise fund, it's all or nothing, so if you're going to do that, then all of the salaries, all the benefits, all have to go in there, and it should be a self-supporting fund. So, if you know that it's not going to be a self-supporting fund, then we probably don't want to do an enterprise fund, but as we're finishing this reconciliation and figuring out where we stand, and we could better assess that, but at this time, I can't really answer whether it would be able to be completely self-sustaining.
So, Sarah, the individual sports often do fundraising.
Yes.
So, wouldn't it make sense to create some standard operating procedures, have the individuals do fundraising, and then seed some of those accounts for their individual sports? Can you segment that gift account by sport?
Yes.
And if they raise two thousand in this calendar year, but they don't need new uniforms, Colin, then, then they can start to plan ahead, because, you know, we've always done that on the youth level.
Yep.
You, you know, the kids go out and they, they hump around to, to do fundraising, then we try to use it in that season, because they were the ones that did the work, so what, what was their benefit from helping? But, but some of it, we had to carry over because- But but some of it, we had to carry over because we had off season expenses or, you know, we had to plan ahead for uniforms and other things. But to help, you know, if you have some organized processes and as these new, you know, volunteers come in to set the standard, like this is what we're going to do, so that they're not having these individual accounts that they're kind of holding themselves and there's no standardization of those processes. And then as volunteers come and go, you know, you're gonna get into a situation where you're gonna go and then they're not gonna have any funds and they're gonna rely on you for the whole amount of a major purchase. So, you know, that that might make sense going forward.
Right, that is something that I did start. And in January, I believe it was around the third or fourth of this year, I met with the help of Colin and all of the associations there, at least one represented from each one of them, all twelve or thirteen of those organizations in the recreation commission. And I explained how I would recommend that they, they're going to fundraise to do a gift account with the town because then it doesn't matter who's changing, as the volunteers change and all that, that then you can have those purposes to raise for capital or for whatever items that you might need. And then I also explained to them how they would need to have their own tax ID if they were not going to do that with the town and that they would need to apply for our nonprofit status if that's what they wished, which most organizations, that's what they would want to do. But I also explained what that would mean, what kinds of reporting that would entail, what paying expenses out of there would entail at a general level so then they could understand what they were getting into. They are all volunteers and we wouldn't be able to do our programs without them. But they should also understand that even though you're a volunteer, if you set up this organization, you still have to meet the IRS regulations or the state regulations for reporting. If you don't want to do that, fine, then you need to send it over to the town. It needs to come through the gift account or or whatnot. And so then we did have some one on one meetings with a lot of them and a lot of them have begun those processes in order to do that. I have had one or two already establish some gift accounts for saving up for different items. So I think that that they're all on board with that. And we we fixed a couple of other processes that were a little antiquated. And so those are, have already begun and I think that then we are well on our way to being in full compliance and being easier for those volunteers and for that kind of turnover.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I've had this discussion with Colin in terms of, you know, the role of the volunteers and what they should be doing and how much they're doing currently. And a lot has to do with his staffing levels, you know. And and obviously, I've I've spent a lot of time there myself as the head of one of the, you know, one of the sports. And we're on the smaller side and it didn't make sense for us to open our own tax ID. It just didn't. We were just too small. We weren't generating the revenue that, you know, soccer or football was generating. And it was a lot of work. We're lucky we had quite a few people that came forward. So, I mean, that's an ongoing conversation for another day, not for this budget season, but, yeah.
Can I just take that question? Are you kind of suggesting that as the groups, the volunteer groups revolve, that if we have almost like a town policy that they have gift funds and not leave it up to them to do this tax ID thing, but have a standard operating procedure that here you go, volunteers, here's how you handle fundraising? That it would make it easier for the volunteers? Does that make sense to you all? Is that what you're trying to say?
Absolutely, yeah, because I can tell you that, you know, people come and go, it's it's a lot of work. They put in a tremendous amount of time and effort and there's no standardization in how lacrosse was doing. Boys lacrosse was doing fundraisers was very different than how girls was doing it is different than soccer and football. And everybody's doing it to some capacity and it was different and it varied from year to year. So I think if we take a little bit of of the, like, this is the easiest path, this is what you should do and we have a little bit more control and and we have a little bit more oversight, you know, and there's, I think that's a better way to do it. I would have liked that option when I was dealing with it. I think that would have been a much smarter, easier way than thinking back on the kind of path that we took. So, yeah, I think that's great that you guys have done that and met with them and, you know. So that's a good, that's a good starting point and and we'll continue and have some follow up conversations with Colin too, so. Good stuff, yeah.
And this fund isn't, the fund's not reconciled at this point? How far off is it?
Currently, the reconciliation is showing about twenty thousand dollars that it's off. There are a couple of items that we are working on to see what the differences are. So, you know, it fluctuates, it's negative on this side, positive on this side, net of twenty out of a two hundred and seventy two thousand dollar budget, uh, excuse me, balance. But it is something that that we need to to figure out prior to the end of the year, prior to to everything going forward in order to know how are our programs doing and therefore to appropriately spend our balance.
There's a timeframe on excess that's in there to be spent, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are we figuring out how that's gonna go?
Uh, yes, and the recreation commission is having a meeting, I believe it's the seventeenth or or somewhere around there, where they will be discussing what they are recommending to help spend down some of that money.
Because I know, like you said, we have that ten thousand maximum that we can have on that account anyway, right?
Right.
That's a total, not for sport.
Correct.
And I know there's a lot more money in there than.
So you you are permitted to carry over from one fiscal year into another, anything that is reserved. You can reserve it simply by the fact that this program is running from June first to August thirty first. So obviously, you've collected all of your revenue for it in this fiscal year, but you're not gonna have all your expenses until the second fiscal year. So so you can carry.
Sort of like a covered money, but, yeah.
Yes, so you can essentially carry over that, which doesn't count towards your ten thousand. But we need to know for all of the programs that have already happened this year, did they have any extra that they've earned? Or did they have a deficit? Either way, and therefore then, okay, if if there is extra there, then it needs to be returned to the general fund. This year, as you know, we have on the capital planning several items that will actually benefit recreation. So essentially, it's going back into recreation, just not to those specific programs. It's it's to the overall program.
Well, the other thing is that if you look at what programs are in a deficit potentially, I'm not saying that there is, but if there's a potential deficit that we need to work at fees.
Exactly. Fees and whether that that's a program that has a lot of interest or not, you know. And that is something that would be definitely at the recreation director's level to be figuring that out. But if you don't have a reconciliation by by sport, how can you make that kind of assessment?
Right, that's my point, I guess.
And, yeah, so.
The data point would be each sport, if they have a deficit, why, what's the interest level? Should we carry it? Should we raise the fee?
Should we increase our fees? All of that, that kind of thing. And then making sure we did find when we were doing this reconciliation that there were a couple of items that were going into the revolving account that didn't belong, that were more general fund revenues, such as rental of the fields. That is a town asset and therefore should be in general fund revenue, not in the revolving. And it's, you know, just over time that that things get lost. And that's why this year, as I had mentioned in previous meetings, that I am looking at the revolving accounts very closely to make sure we're meeting master and law requirements.
Yeah, and we had talked about all of them generally, but.
Yep.
So Colin, I noticed you included a budget of the anticipated expenditures under the revolving fund for next year, which is, which is great to see. But I do have a couple of quick questions on it. Item number five two four eight, the computer, repair computer equipment, you have twenty two hundred and fifty dollars. How does that differ than any other computer equipment?
So the, our programs have to be self sustaining. So for equipment and things like that, we have to plan for the cost of those.
Okay, it can't come out of IT, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, yep.
That was my question. The only other, well, actually, the line, could you explain line five seven eight eight refunds, your budget fifty two thousand five hundred dollars? What what is that line?
So that would be, I guess it's, it would be an expected amount of refunds that we would be processing within that fiscal year. Obviously, we don't know that because, you know, people haven't signed up and asked for a refund, but that's just where it would be put.
So it's exactly what if I sign my kid up and now we changed our line, can I have a refund?
Yeah.
Or the program got canceled or, you know, there was an injury or something like that.
I just wouldn't have guessed it would have been that high, that's.
It happens.
Well, what is the total anticipated revenue coming in?
If I made the, the detail says the fifty two, but on the summary, it's actually twenty five thousand for the refunds. If you.
Oh, okay.
If you look on the one that has all the general ledger.
The the front page?
The front page, you can see that that there was an adjustment.
Well, the print's kind of small, so, hold on a second. Refocus my eyes.
Yeah, I know.
Seventeen is fifty two.
I think that was intended.
So the new, we compared it down.
Yeah, it was adjusted twenty seven, twenty seven five.
Yes, currently, year to date, we have about nineteen thousand that we've done in refunds. So twenty five thousand made a lot more sense than the fifty two five.
Probably more in line with actuals.
Yep, so when Denise and I met with Colin, we all agreed that it would be more reasonable to reduce that.
Could you make it play, I didn't see any smaller, I just was wondering.
This is bigger than it was when I.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, you were you were asking a question, Eric. I just didn't want to lose.
I think I just found it on that sheet. I was looking for the anticipated revenue numbers. That's at the bottom of the page?
Yep, that would be the five hundred and eighty five thousand versus the expenses of six hundred and fourteen thousand.
In the the FY fifteen, sixteen, sixteen is actuals.
Correct.
And seventeen is anticipated.
Correct.
So I'm just curious why you anticipate, did you go up with fees?
What's that?
I'm just wondering why you anticipate roughly eighty five, roughly ninety thousand dollars more in revenue than we did in FY sixteen?
Uh, more programs.
Okay, you can answer that.
Yeah, we got about, expected about five hundred more participants this year.
What programs did you grow, Colin, or what new programs did you add?
Uh, so we added a program called the Future All Stars, kind of a cool program where it's for little kids between three and five years old. And what they do is they get kind of a snapshot of four different sports. So they get a chance to play soccer, they get a chance to play basketball, tennis and T ball. So they get kind of a chance to, you know, just check them out. You know, we're trying to give kids a chance to fall in love with a sport. What we're finding in East Long Meadow is that soccer's fairly popular here in East Long Meadow. So we want kids to get a chance to fall in love with a traditional spring sport. So we get them there by saying they're soccer, but we're hoping that they're falling in love with some of the other sports as well. We also did a program called the Little Laxers Program, which are kids, kindy or, I'm sorry, kindergarten, first grade and second grade. So it's all about getting a lacrosse stick in their hands a little bit early. So again, trying to get them to fall in love with that spring sport so that that program is also doing well. We also expanded our camp this upcoming year. So we added some science programs as well. We also added art programs during school breaks. So we got into kind of the school break programs a little bit more. And coming up, actually, this upcoming year, so you can see for some of the new ones coming up this year, is we're getting more into the art and the music as opposed to being, in some senses, I call myself the youth athletic director for the town of East Long Meadow. I'd like to do a little bit more. So this upcoming year, you'll see adult programming. So you'll see adult music. You'll have a chance to learn how to play the guitar if you've always wanted to. And at the kid level as well, so adult and kids, you know, drums, singing as well as performance. Art programs with Let's Go Art, spelt as Van Go. And then we're also piloting a new program called the Explorers. The Explorers program is a seventh and eighth grade program. What we found is that our camp, it's hard to pry the cell phones away from the seventh and eighth graders when they're in a traditional camp setting. So the Explorers program actually offers children a chance to go rock climbing and kayaking and and hiking, get a chance to get outside and in the woods where the cell phones hopefully won't work. But a little bit more adventurous of a program. So those are some of the the new programs that we that we have going. One more as well is I I got our town certified as an NFL Play Sixty Town. So we do have, another one is the first and second grade flag football program. Gets a chance to kids to just, you know, play football. You know, we're not putting a helmet on them, we're just out there having fun. So those are just some of the, some of the highlights on why I expect to see see more registrations next year.
So more programs and you're able to meet the capacity with current staffing levels?
So a lot of these programs, we're focusing more towards they register for the program and we hand over the forms to the instructor. So it's it's low impact for the office because about sixty percent of our signups are online. So it's as simple as hitting print and giving it to the art teacher and saying, have a great program. So just a little bit more of, as opposed to so much hands on, creating the teams and the schedules and getting the coaches and running coaches nights and all those type things. More of a program that is run by a local company here in East Long Meadow. You know, if you have an art center, come see us. We'd love to do more art programs, but you sign up, we hand over the list of the students and it's your classroom. So just programs that are a little less kind of impactful on our staff, but still trying to offer more for the community.
Just like any other revolving account, is that we cannot spend more than what we have. So the budget that you see before you projects a deficit of about thirty thousand dollars. So since you'd only have ten thousand that you could reserve over, we would have to adjust our programs as we're going in order to not exceed and to not actually realize that kind of a deficit, which is why our reconciliation is so important to find out now before we enter into there and find ourselves in trouble.
Quick question. Page, bottom part of page three, it talks about additional requests. And I know this is all in conceptual stage. What I'm reading, the fine print would be to have the, the cell banner space over in center field. And that would be sort of a similar imaging to what we have on Route Five, Long Meadow, behind the forest park.
Yeah, Picknally Field.
Picknally Field, similar type of setup. Is that center field totally in the purview of the rec department? Or would there have to be a partnership with the with the DPW as far as these signs are concerned and so on?
As as far as the maintenance of our fields in town, and that's one hundred percent the DPW. As far as the scheduling, that's the recreation department for for the center field there. This program, I would picture myself with a bucket of zip ties putting up banners. But, you know, that that would be the hope of this program, that we'd be able to hopefully highlight some of our East Long Meadow businesses. Give it more of that ballpark feel. You know, you go to Fenway Park, you see the big WB Mason on the on the wall. We welcome WB Mason to sponsor our programs. But, you know, just give it that kind of ballpark feel.
Question I have is in terms, just in terms of trying to raise even more revenue, instead of having a flat five hundred of banner, have the banners that are located where you get more street visibility and so forth that are more premium. I know as a Patriots season ticket holder, certain games are worth here, others are not so much so.
So tiered pricing, you got it.
I mean, based on visibility and and so forth. That might, you may be able to generate a little more money for the cost. But I guess it's all subject to planning board approval, town manager and so forth.
Absolutely.
If you do that, does all the money have to go to baseball?
Say that again, please.
If you do this banner project, selling banners, added banners, if you add a baseball facility, does that money have to go to baseball?
The current proposal, the last time that I saw it, does not meet the requirements to enter into the revolving account and would be one hundred percent general fund revenue. It would not be restricted to recreation. So therefore, it would not be.
Couldn't offset the.
Fair enough.
Right, so if in the following year, the town council wanted to have the town manager and myself consider that as part of the direction for the recreation's general fund operating budget as to whether to increase it, you could do that, but it would be totally general fund revenue. So some of what this policy would have to to work out are those kinds of details, what meets master and law, how you'd be able to do all of that, as well as the planning and zoning kinds of laws, who set the rules on all the signs as we discussed earlier today.
Can we regulate who advertises? Example.
That's one of the, that's been one of the big questions, yeah.
Marijuana.
No, you cannot.
No, you cannot.
There is, there is case law on that, yeah, I'm sure.
So that was some of the concerns that have been raised as this has been in the. So that was some of the concerns that had been raised, as this has been in the, the planning phase, is that, you know, if you're having children there, and then you have a, a smoke shop or a marijuana store that wants to, you can't, by law, say no.
You can legislate the size, you can legislate, you know, where on the property it goes, but you can't legislate, um, who's got it.
So once you allow it, it's open to any establishment, company, business that wants to advertise. So we sure we want to allow it?
It's a discussion I've had with Colin already, my concerns.
Well, we know it won't be tobacco, they have their own restrictions on advertising.
Well, I can think of a full host of businesses, I'd rather not see advertising to our youth income, so.
Yeah.
Tobacco's just one of them.
Something to consider, I guess, yeah. They do it maybe on a, on a one-year trial basis, see what happens.
Well.
It's twenty grand, I mean, that's what our anticipated revenue for the project is, I say we're better off not doing it if you can't write.
Tricky, tricky place to go.
He's selling his man is two hundred thousand dollars or something.
I know it's, you know, the, the reason that we continue the conversation with it is, you know, I constantly get the question, "Why can't we, why can't we, why aren't we?" If Picnelli's doing it.
I'd ask you that question, but if Picnelli doesn't.
Yeah, exactly.
So I know we had this discussion until now.
Well, ever kind of, is that Picnelli is what, like Realtor, and so forth, are there any other, any liquor stores that advertise?
Liquor stores want to.
Landscapers, there's restaurants.
You can't deny them if they request.
If they want to.
You gotta give it to them.
Yeah.
I mean, one, one would hope that we wouldn't be encountered with that, but the easiest way to make sure we're, we're not is to not allow it.
Yep.
You know, at all, because if some industry that.
True, but there's also precedent, there's some precedent out there, where, you know, it's not the first rec department that's come up with the idea. There's other people that have successfully done it in other towns, um, a lot of other towns. I mean, I, 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 um, coach at a field in Wilbraham, and the field next to me has signage all over it. There's nothing inappropriate there, there's nothing inappropriate Picnelli, not saying we should or shouldn't, definitely needs to be discussed, you know?
Yeah, no, I'm not saying don't discuss it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but, and, and I know it's only twenty thousand, but it's twenty thousand.
Yeah, it could grow, you know, substantially, you know, you think about, you know, jerseys and then the whole deal. You know, we, we hand out thousands of jerseys per year, so there's a possibility that you could move the program into, um, doing it on jerseys, or even on, uh, facilities as not just the baseball fields, or traveling signs, you know, as it travels with the team to all their games, things like that. So if the program definitely could grow to that two hundred thousand dollar mark, um, that could assist the town in, you know, some important projects.
Yeah, there's a lot of good local businesses that would support it. They spend a lot of money on advertising anyhow, in other venues.
And if not, they could always donate to one of the gift accounts to fund some of the equipment.
That's right.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I've knocked on a lot of those doors.
Yes, you have, for sure.
So, there are a lot of good, good companies out there.
To both of you, I know a whole lot of hard work's gone into this reconciliation and getting things lined up, and so thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So now we're on to, um, this is the proposed budget that I need to, to have to you all, so that we can go to the public hearing. This is what we would be presenting at the public hearing, the, um.
So this reflects any of the changes that were discussed last week?
All of the changes, I did not change the second page because it really is an overview that anybody in, in the public would want to hear that, that. I'll, I'll scour it for, make sure it's, nothing's changed, but nothing had changed, um, really.
Uh, you mean the sources and uses overview?
No, no, the second page where it's the narrative.
Yeah, narrative, got it, thanks.
It, it highlights, you know, the public safety changes that we're making and that kind of stuff. Um, sources and uses, the only changes for, for any of this is really the tweaks that you all have made, and they've been, um.
So, they've been the House Ways and Means Committee, the adjusted numbers were put into here for the sources. Um, I added in, the health department had increased their fees, so I added in that revenue, because originally I hadn't. Um, the library revolving fund, as we discussed, is now, um, being dissolved, so the revenue from those fines is going into the general fund, so those sources have been added in here. Um, then the uses were the items that we have discussed the previous meetings, uh, police and fire, uh, the school department adjustments, the change in the reserve account.
That school department adjustment, adjustment was the nine thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And the fifty thousand would be.
So, Joe, did you happen to catch last, did you watch last week's meeting? So, the, the topic of the school department's other two requests came up, when we discussed the budget. And how we propose to deal with it is, one of those expenses, I think it was fifty thousand, was a one-time expense. So we thought that would be more appropriate to do from free cash. That, that way it's not a reoccurring thing to build upon in every year's budget thereafter, since it's a one-time expense. And then it was only a nine thousand dollar adjustment after that, so we, that nine thousand we did include in the budget. So essentially, they'll get both those items.
Right, yeah, no, that makes a ton of sense.
But only one in the budget, the other one will be appropriation through the.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, smart move.
And to, um, to further explain the education budget, uh, they had their public hearing last night. There were a couple of students and no one else from the public, but they did, they, they are recommending to the council the same budget that they had, including that fifty thousand, but it was made very clear to them that it would be coming out of, um, you know, the free cash rather than, and they're, they're fine with that. Um, so, so their budget recommendation to you all, the, the final one, after their public hearing, will show the fifty thousand as part of their bottom line, but they understand where it will be coming from.
So the other thing that I wanted to just kind of make sure they understood, that we're gonna do the fifty thousand as a separate appropriation.
Yes, they did.
Which means the appropriation will be for the purpose of, and I don't remember the book.
Curriculum renewal.
For the curriculum renewal, if the curriculum renewal, they need to, correct me if I'm wrong, then this Sarah, but if the curriculum renewal comes in at forty-five thousand dollars.
That's what they get.
The remaining comes back to the general fund.
Um, that's correct, right?
Yes, yeah, but whether that, see, that's also one of the differences, is by doing it as a free cash versus in the budget. If it's in the budget, they can reposition that five thousand to some level of purpose. I just want them to understand they can't.
It's not allowable.
Yes, that's, that's correct, if that's what it was approved for, that's all that, that I will sign off at.
But, I guess our question is, do they truly understand the parameters around that? If it did come in at forty-five thousand, that's what's going to be expended, and that the five stays in the free cash and not goes to.
We can ensure that that is very clear.
Yeah.
Um, I believe that that is an understanding, but we will just make sure that all members understand that, um, because, you know, everybody has different levels of familiarity with free cash.
Actually, I think, um, Sarah might not even be aware that I scheduled a meeting with Gordon and Pam for later this week, so we'll, we'll be able to discuss that. They also, this discussion.
I'm sure it won't be a problem, I just don't want any surprises, I've seen it happen.
Um, the discussion of that particular item, um, really brought to, to light to them that they need to maybe have a better way of addressing that, you know, that curriculum renewal that they, going forward. And Gordon did say to me that there, there was discussion about that last night, so I think it probably helped. Mike, you had a question at all?
Good solution.
My question was just answered, but if we're, if we're, thank you for that, but if, if we are, if we're moving forward. Um, Mike, uh, we talked about tweaking the reserve account last week, and I'd like to, um, put that back on the table for consideration of, um, raising that amount back up to unexpected, um, problems that we could be facing forward. Um, I think we lowered that to two twenty-five, down to about one twelve, and I think we should talk about that a little bit.
What page are you on? Mike?
It's our reserve fund.
Five.
Yeah, and.
I mean, we're not, we're not spending that, I mean, it's a reserve fund, it's there for unnecessary emergencies, and I, I really think we're looking at this.
It is, but cell two is the, cell two is the stabilization fund, and once certified, cell two is free cash. What I don't like about the reserve fund is that it's money we're raising and appropriating, just in case. In other words, we're taxing the people for it, just in case, it's part of the budget. So in my mind, keep that an absolute bare minimum, don't, don't tax people for any more than we, than we have to. We still have reserves if, if an emergency comes up, we have the, the, uh, stabilization fund, which is well over two million.
Yeah, it's like two million right now.
And then we also.
The process to get money from those accounts is different than the reserve fund.
Two-thirds of it.
It, it is, however, with this new form of government, it's not cumbersome like it was before. So it would be simply that Denise and I would come before you and say, "This is what, what occurred, we'd like to, you know, have a, have you approve a free cash transfer, or a, um, request from stabilization." The difference between the two would be the number of votes that I'd need for it to be approved.
Stabilization is two-thirds of it.
So, what has our history been with using reserve fund year-to-year? I mean, do you have kind of a, can you give us a sense, I mean, do, do we tend to tap into it on a regular basis?
Up, up years and down years, we've had years where we've used a good, good deal of it, and we've had years where we barely touched it.
Like an October storm could be an example of that, correct?
Well, that wouldn't touch the October storm, but, uh, but yes, it, it would.
An event like that.
Yeah, in fact, similar to that.
But then in a event like that, you could use.
But cell two is the stabilization fund. See, one of the reasons the reserve fund was always established and used is town meeting, who was the legislative body, only met twice a year. So any emergent or, I, I keep using the words emergency, but it's not necessarily emergent, but urgent appropriation or over expenditure had to wait until, and God forbid it came up after the October town meeting.
And if you wanted to do a special.
Then you're pretty much done for the year. The council meets currently twice a month, minimum, at minimum. So the opportunity to transfer funds from the stabilization, for example, or the, uh, free cash to cover things, unanticipated things like that, are twice a month, not twice a year.
So it would get transferred to the reserve fund and then used from the reserve fund?
No.
No, it would usually get transferred right to the, the purpose or need.
So, so from my accounting standpoint, if it was a salary expense, for instance, a, you know, a pay raise or something like that that was negotiated, you'd still want the expense to show on your salary line, so then you are budgeting appropriately in future years. It makes sense where it's coming from and all that, you wouldn't put it in the reserve fund, the reserve fund never actually has expenses go there. All that happened previously was that I would transfer the budgeted amount to the line where that expense is going. So, the reserve fund never actually has expenditures in it.
But realistically, it sat there because you only met twice a year.
Exactly, and it costs ten to fourteen thousand to hold a special town meeting. So if you have a, an issue for five grand, it's certainly not worth it to be spending that with all, all the extra expenses. Whereas here, it's pretty much free.
So it's changed, yeah, the, the sequence for moving, moving, I mean, has changed dramatically with the new form of government. So I would ask then, are you, are you both comfortable with, at, at one twelve, or should it be reduced further? If it's that easy to obtain cash?
Well, that was.
I'm comfortable.
I guess, I guess, uh, the, the examples that I have in my head of where I've used that kind of a fund in the past is, um, a collapse of a bridge where we needed some extra money, i- it was more than, than a hundred twelve, but, and our budget was smaller, it was only thirty-six million. Um, union negotiations where you're doing a whole group of salaries that you're, um, funding retro back to the beginning of the, that can be a big chunk of money. And that's where we would get that, is from this kind of reserve fund. Um, uh, a major lawsuit that you can anticipate is going to happen, but it burns up a huge amount of legal money. And, so those are the kinds of things now, as long as you all are aware that it's been cut, and that we'd have to come to you all, those are examples to me of the kinds of things that I can, can you?
Yeah, no, that, that would be it, but as, if in your planning that you'd rather that we come before you for doing free cash or a, um, stabilization, then, then that's fine, um, or we can do reserve fund. In the end, it all nets to the same place on my books, so, in the end, it doesn't make a huge difference to me from an accounting standpoint, it's just what, what process and.
It's a reason appropriate, you're using tax money, free cash and stabilization, you have the money.
Because if you raise it just in case, now you've, you've taken that money from our townspeople, and now you can do the two and a half percent increase, the prop two and a half on that, so you can raise again based on that, now let's say you never used it. So now it's just sitting in there, just building into our free cash, and instead, you know, we don't want to overtax our townspeople, we want to make sure that it's, it's appropriate without hitting that twenty-five dollar per thousand cap. So, you know, it's a fine balancing line that we, balancing act, excuse me.
So while adding consideration, then, I, I would just like an opinion on, I mean, do we leave it where it is? Do we increase it or decrease it? Because based on the conversation, it would almost sound like, well, if it's so easy to appropriate that money to a town council meeting, why are we leaving a hundred and twelve thousand dollars?
That was my suggestion last week, but there was some uneasiness among the council members of eliminating it totally, so we cut it in half and said, "Let's go through the next fiscal year and see how it works out, perhaps next year it could be reconsidered."
Then we have a year of experience under our.
That's it, I just wanted to open up a dialogue and make sure we're all comfortable on what we're doing and we're supporting Denise and Sarah with what they need to do with this balancing act, so.
I think that given all the changes that have occurred, that it's a good thing to, to reduce it a bit from the, uh, last year was two fifty, or the year before that, it was two fifty. So doing the one twelve and seeing how it goes, how much do we actually use it? This past year, we had a few, um, expenses that were related to the prior form of government that then impacted us this year, so I don't think that it's really an accurate, um, reflection of what kind of activity to expect. So I think then having a year's worth of what typically happens, you know, when are all the union negotiations coming up? All those kinds of things, so we can better plan, but that this is a, "Oh my God, did we forget something, hey, did something huge happen?" Um, that then we, we have some avenue to go about it.
So how much did we use out there this year?
We've used everything except for forty-six thousand dollars.
And was the settle, was the settlement?
Yeah.
It was a settlement.
It was all in there. So we don't, we don't make mistakes like that anymore.
It was two settlements and a prior year bill that was not accounted for from a department head that no longer is here.
Typical uses over the years were things like, um, fire truck motor, you know, you can't budget for enormous repair.
Right, I mean, now you just come to us and say, "We need the money for the fire truck."
Well, that's, that's the point, yeah, exactly.
The process is much more fluid.
If, 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 like, we had a meeting, uh, town meeting October tenth, and October twelfth, they blew a motor on one of the fire trucks and needed fifteen thousand dollars for a repair job, they'd have to wait until the next town meeting in May.
Or do a special for fifteen thousand dollars.
This enabled a funding stream, so that we didn't have to spend the five thousand dollars to have a town meeting, to, to expend fifteen, that kind of thing. So, um, it was, it was, that was kind of the typical uses, those types of things. Um, it did get to be up until, um, very recent years, it was a constant flow of money to the police department overtime budget, but that's been, seems to have been remedied, um, but those were really the typical uses.
I mean, based on the discussion, if you want an answer from me, I guess I'm comfortable with the reduced number and see how it goes for next year, that seems to.
That, that was my point, open up a dialogue here, see how we feel, take their opinions into consideration, so.
Yeah.
Seems like we're all.
We're good. Thank you.
Good questions.
Sarah, I just, uh, one question under, on page four, um, other state aid, it's right below lottery aid, is that the circuit breaker money?
That one, it's several items, so one minute and I can tell you exactly which ones it is. That is the charter tuition reimbursement, and the, uh, veterans benefits, and the exempt VBS and elderly payments that we receive. Okay.
How comfortable are we with the state aid figures? Not, I mean, I know where you brought it, but, I mean, from a political standpoint, how comfortable are we that these are gonna be the end figures? Yeah, 'cause that's, that's a big chunk, it's an over a half million dollar increase.
From, from the previous, it's not a significant decrease from the governor's budget. Last year, when we approved the budget, when the appropriations committee recommended it to the town, it was just based on the governor's budget, it hadn't gone to the House Ways and Means, and it was pretty close. Um, the past couple of years, we've been pretty accurate by doing it off of the governor, since this is only sixty-five thousand dollars different from the governor's. I, I think given that track record, I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know what's going to happen.
Well, I think my biggest concern is the five hundred and seventy-nine and the chapter seventy, did they change the formula? 'Cause our population's not growing.
They did increase the chapter seventeen.
They did increase the.
They did increase the.
So they didn't change the formula, they just increased the amount for people?
From what I understand, yes.
Yes, from twenty to thirty.
And I guess that's my biggest one really, is do we feel comfortable that's going to hold through the senate and then joint committee? And then obviously, if it goes to the governor, it'll pass because he submitted it in the first place, but, so we're.
That seems like that's pretty baked. That seems like that was pretty solid, like there was a lot of traction.
I think we should be okay there. And on the flip side is, let's say for argument's sake, that those revenues come in slightly less. We are not taxing to the max, we are leaving over a million dollars on the unused. So even if all of that fell through.
One point two three, to be exact.
Yes, so even if all of that fell through, we'd still would not be taxing to the max. So I feel comfortable that we do have that cushion, if you will.
I, I agree, but the only thing is I like that one point two three, so.
I do too.
So if it didn't come through with, for some reason, the last minute chapter seventy eight change, then we might want to go back on some of the things that we boosted this year and reevaluate, or not. But that's why I was asking the question.
Yep. Any other questions? So if we were to approve this now, then my estimate is, which of course we're not doing today, but, but my estimate is that this would be approximately a twenty one dollar and sixty three cent tax rate if presuming property levels remains the same and that all of my assumptions are accurate, which last year was fairly close, so.
And when do we do assessments again? Property assessments?
The property assessment, we are, it's now going to be a five year, but I think that's next year, but don't quote me on that. I know that there was something right now, is it next year? Yeah.
When?
Next year. Next year.
I, I believe it's next year.
Yeah, I thought it usually happens in winter months, you know, January, February.
It's a five year. It's a fiscal year, yeah.
So, all right, till twenty nineteen or eighteen, are you going to do it?
I don't feel comfortable enough to say for certain because I, I'm sorry, I only assumed responsibility of that department a week ago today. So I really haven't gotten to look it back.
All good.
So I, I did notice that the increase to capital is a hundred and thirty three eight, so almost a hundred and thirty four thousand. And the savings in the, in the debt services, in other words, debt services dropping off this year equals a hundred and forty two thousand. So we're almost investing that savings in capital, which is a good thing. In the next few years, as some drops off, that might be a good way to ensure that it's being reinvested in capital. It's taking that number and increasing capital by the same figure.
Yep.
Then that would allow us, once that comes up a little bit, that would allow us to float actually some bonds and pay for it out of the annual capital appropriation without additional monies needing to be appropriated from the, that would be a pretty creative way to deal with it.
Yeah, that was one of the thoughts that we had had about how to do it. Because that's similar to what we wind up doing for community preservation and for water and sewer.
Exactly, yes, the same thing, just in the.
And so that was, that was where my goal was going, and so I think that it's doable.
Yeah, good, good, I feel better about that than that we're reinvesting some of the capital.
Any questions, concerns on the general fund? Because we do have a couple of other items that I wanted to make sure that you all saw prior to the public hearing.
Do you, you don't need a vote if this is what goes for the public hearing, do you?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's more of an assumption.
If you have, if you have more, just, this is my proposal to you all.
Right.
I don't know that you need to accept it at this point. It goes to the public hearing as my proposal. And then after that, the way I, I'm envisioning or interpreting what it is, is that after that, you all then take that public hearing information and make any changes and then, I think you can only go down?
You can't go up. Yep, you can't go up.
Well, we can go down or we could, we could just say no and refuse to appropriate or refuse to vote on, adopt it and know it met more appropriate.
Right.
That's how, I guess you'd force an increase.
But you better have told me now if you've got.
Yeah.
Kind of reservations, please.
This looks good for the public hearing.
Wonderful.
But if you, if you have something that you want to go up, now's the time to tell us, you know, if it's not properly funded. Similar to what Mike was saying, you have something to go up?
So then looking at the capital projects that are on here, it's the same, pretty much the same as what we had discussed the last time. It does include the ambulance. So you can see that from the general funds, the one point two million, does everybody see that on the second page? Then we have the sewer enterprise funds, the same as we had discussed before. The water enterprise funds, looks like it got cut off.
Yeah, it does.
So the, the water enterprise funds are the two projects that we had spoken about before. We have added to it one more item and that was the water main that we had spoken about before.
Maple Street.
So, at Maple Street. So the Long Meadow Board of Selectmen, I believe, is voting on the diff tonight. So if that does get approved, then it would make logical sense to be doing that project at that time. So we wanted to put it on tonight, just so then you're aware of it. If they don't approve it tonight, we can remove it before the public hearing. But the water fund would be paying for that. The water fund would need to bond for that, the same discussion that we had with Bob, I believe it was two weeks ago, when we discussed about that in detail, so that is added here.
Does that make sense if you're going to fix the intersection all the way down?
Exactly, the street's already open.
Right.
You should.
Might as well do it all at once.
Right, so that one would need to be bonded, that's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And the short term, that would not be completed quickly. So the short term financing for that is approximately nineteen thousand dollars, eighteen? I think we got a quote of about seventeen, so to be safe, given interest rates changing, we did nineteen. That was added in the water enterprise fund interest line, if you look at the debt service. So we did account for it there as well as here in the capital project. So that would meet all of the master general law requirements is to be able to get that approved and be able to move forward with that.
And again, that's coming out of the enterprise fund area, so it doesn't really affect the overall bottom line.
Nope.
So there were two things that are missing from this, the bottom of this sheet, that I can just send it over to you with those two things added back on.
Yeah, it looks like it got cut off for some reason.
Such a big number that the computer just took it off.
I think so, got tired of printing.
I think it must be that IT explanation up there that paid up the rest of the page.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Quimby couldn't figure that out, he's an IT guy.
We're not throwing him under the bus.
No, no, no.
Not today, yeah.
I'll shut my access off, I won't be able to get back in the building. He just fixed it.
Then we have the LCAT enterprise fund, there has been no change to this since we last met on this on April twenty fifth. But this is the format and this is what would need to be approved in order for us to fund the account we created back in November. The sewer enterprise fund, there was a slight adjustment made to having to do with the connection fees, the questions that Eric had raised. The DPW board is meeting tomorrow night, I believe, to vote on the rates. So presuming that they vote how we are anticipating, then the water and sewer fund would be presented like this at the public hearing. If they do, if they change anything, then we will have to make a slight adjustment to that. But again, it's a self-funding fund, so it shouldn't impact, and it shouldn't be too big of a difference if it is. The water, I explained to you, the only difference is the interest. Then we have our chapter ninety money. So for those who aren't familiar, we receive chapter ninety money from the state, which is money in order to fund our public roadways, to do repairs, crack ceiling, paving, things of that nature. When we met two weeks ago, Bob parent talked about some of that and how our contract is expiring with the state come June thirtieth, but that we will be signing a new contract with them. So we did receive the letter as to how much they are projecting. And then we also did a true up to make sure over the ten years that the amount that the state had agreed to fund to us had been appropriated from our town meeting. There was a tiny true up that needed to happen, so that number has been included. So the five hundred and eighty two thousand nine eighty eight includes both. So this is simply that the town or town council votes that yes, we can spend that money because per master general law, we can't spend if it wasn't appropriated. So we would spend the money for these roadways, then we submit to the state and then they reimburse us for that. So it's an in and out that, that nets out to zero, but we do have to have town council approval in order to spend money in the first place. Does that make sense to everybody?
I don't, and this has already worked into Bob's, you know, projected projects for roadway, so this money is already kind of spent per se.
It's a pretty consistent, yeah, amount for the chapter ninety.
Manpower has been planned for it, yes, as to however he distributes his staff. The next item that you will see is on that same sheet, it's the community preservation fund. So we have to appropriate how much revenues we're estimating and therefore how much to go into each of the four buckets. Ralph Page had indicated that there were four. So you have administrative expenses, you have historical, affordable housing and open space. Master general law requires that you do it a minimum of five percent in administrative and ten percent in each of the others. Each town may choose to increase it if they wish. Once you appropriate it here, that money is restricted for only that purpose. The rest of it, you would designate as undesignedated. So let's say that you had a historical project that was going to cost more than what we had in that historical reserve. You could appropriate it out of the undesignedated and be able to use that. But once you've designated it as historical, you can't then change that purpose. So what I have recommended in the past is that we do the minimum for each of the buckets and then should a project come up that is of a need and we would need to get it out of the undesignedated, we could do that because you had that kind of liberty with the funds. Does that make sense to everybody? Currently, our two bonds are both being paid out of the undesignedated portion of the community preservation. So you see at the top here, we have what the revenue is going to be and how much we're designated for each of those buckets. And then at the bottom, you could see appropriations and that we are requesting appropriation to pay for both of those bonds. And this includes a principal and interest for it, so.
With the reduction that Ralph spoke about tonight in the state aid, we're not in any danger of not being able to meet our obligations on the bond payment?
Not at this time, not at this time.
Not at this time?
No.
I don't like that, at this time, do you anticipate it?
I think that, no, because the amount of revenue that we are collecting from the taxpayers would, well, it's the surcharge for it, but yes, that, that would cover it. And when I do my estimate on this, I don't take into account the state just in case because it fluctuates. So based on my projections, I don't foresee that being a problem through the end of those bond payments. If they take on additional ones, I would need to do that calculation. So the, the item that was brought up earlier tonight, I have not been able to do that calculation yet.
You mean the seven hundred fifty?
Yes, so I could then look into that to see. But, you know, it's a fine balancing act because if the state is reducing the money that they're adding to it, then that also, if you're taking your bucket of money and most of it you're putting towards bond payments, it leaves very little for these smaller projects that come up that, you know, have need. So that would be something that would need to be considered.
Do you remember how, what the terms on the brown property was, was that twenty year?
I don't remember off the top of my head, if you want, I can look it up, it will take me two minutes.
No, don't, don't waste everybody's time, I'm just curious, so if you think of it at another time and just drop me an email.
Sure, sure, I can do that.
I had a quick, another one of my quick questions while I answer. I know it's not part of the budget, but what money are we getting on the, from MGM on traffic, on this whole mitigation? I mean, this was all negotiated before we were involved and so forth.
Ten thousand dollars?
You'd a hundred thousand a year.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand a year.
A hundred thousand a year, I forget for how many years.
No, fifteen.
When does it start?
Fifteen, I'm sorry, they pay this, they've started before they built.
Yes, so, but that is then in a special revenue account that, that doesn't affect these budgets and that's.
No, I'm just curious what it's supposed to, I mean, used for improving Maple Street?
Traffic issues?
You know, police officers, it gets it busy.
You have to justify to them when you want to take it out, what you, what you're reasoning for it is, and then we are obligated to stick with that reason.
We're talking about two different funds.
Yeah, there are two here.
There's two different, there's the, the surrounding community agreements that were reached prior to them going in. And that, I believe, is a hundred thousand dollar a year for fifteen years, I believe it is.
I don't remember the term.
There's an expiration to it, I think it's fifteen years.
Once the casino comes online?
Once they're open, once they open their doors, that's correct. That money's undesignedated, that money the town can use for offsetting our annual budget, we can use it for capital, we can use it. That's different than mitigation money that's, that's for use for mitigating problems that arise as a result of the casino being open in, in our community. So there's two different things we're talking about here.
Right.
And I think you're referring to the one when they open the doors.
Right.
The cash flow starts right, so that might be something that we want to start thinking about the best use for our community on, rather than just get.
Fall of next year, right? Fall, fall of next year, I think, September eighteen.
If, yeah, if all goes well, that this time next year, we should be having that conversation about the best uses for that.
Something to keep in mind.
Yes, yep.
That's good news, thank you.
Any questions related to community preservation?
Maybe we can get, you know, get a copy of the agreement for our record or at least access it, because it must be something we executed. Do you have a copy that pretty much matches what I understand?
I have a binder like about this big.
As do I.
Community agreement that was negotiated.
Yeah, there were a couple of different things that.
But the gist of it is, it's a hundred thousand a year for possibly fifteen years?
I think, if you remember Jim, the number is, it is fifteen, yeah.
That's good, good money.
The next item that you see here is the enterprise funds. So these, excuse me, not enterprise, the revolving funds. These are the revolving funds that fall under chapter forty four, section fifty three E and a half.
E and a half, I like that.
E and a half. So these ones have to be authorized every year. And for this year, we are permitted to authorize them all without making them part of the bylaw due to the short timeframe at making it into the bylaws. But part of the modernization bill is that the purpose of these and the authorization of them needs to happen in your bylaws or in local ordinance. And, but they are making an exception for the first year, so, which works out for us because our bylaw committee is still meeting on them and I don't believe would have them passed prior to the start of the fiscal year. So here are the three that we had discussed previously. The solid waste disposal, which is exactly as we had discussed at the two meetings ago, I believe, or last meeting, yeah, two meetings ago. The health department one and then the council on aging. The council on aging, I again reviewed in detail, there were grants and other items that did not belong in there. So I have removed them out of that fund and really left it with just what truly should be in revolving account. So ten thousand dollars is what I am estimating based on the current year activity. And I think that that would be more than appropriate because it's primarily for, they have a fitness room and exercise classes and people pay a membership to it and, you know, the exercise, you know, you go do yoga and you pay your five dollars or two dollars or whatever it is. So that's the primary driver of it, it's not, not a huge expense, but you still need to have the expense approved in order to spend from it. So that's what those are. The recreation revolving is under fifty three D, so does not require this kind of authorization. That's why we just brought it before you tonight to talk about it, but that you don't actually need to approve it. And then the fifty three F is the enterprise funds, which we already talked about. So does that make sense or as much sense as master general law can make?
Do you have a letter with a half?
Top half, bottom half. There are quite a few that have halves. So I believe that is everything. I had gone through the town meeting for the past two years to make sure that I had caught everything.
See it, slacker.
So when we, after the public hearing, when we go forward to be approving the budget, we'll talk about, okay, these are the items that will need to have separate, you know, approvals such as, OPEB will need to be specifically mentioned, the stabilization, but those are the items that you already see on your general. But those are the items that you already see on your general fund. And if you were to look at a previous warrant, you would see it as a separate warrant article. But we've already included it in that one chart, so I felt it was duplicate to, to do it again. Does that make sense to everybody?
So are you all comfortable with this level of detail? More for the public hearing, less? I, I've, I've done lots of public hearings, but not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good, just be prepared if there's anyone who wants more minutia, just be prepared to answer it.
Absolutely.
Actually more detailed than traditionally was going to be.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
This is less than I've presented in the past, so it will grow on that.
That's good, I'm glad.
Yeah.
Next year, next year, this is my first swipe at it.
In the past, when I would present it, I had the other detail with me in case it came up, but...
But it didn't come, yeah.
Yeah, it rarely...
Rarely.
Once in a great while.
Now that you say that, it'll come up this year.
That's okay, I'm ready.
And I've sent this here, a couple of, of charts that will show the, the larger pieces of the budget in, in bigger categories is something that might be good. And percent, the percentage of the budget that is education, that is public safety, that is general government, you know, so that maybe the residents can see a little more where their tax dollars are coming. A couple of those kinds of things, yeah.
If we did a pie chart, I mean, it is summarized in that summary sheet here, but some people prefer a pie chart.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll add to, this is the, the beginning of, of what you're going to see.
I, I'll be surprised if there's, you never know, never say never, but I'll be surprised if there's a lot of hesitation from the community. I mean, basically, you're presenting a budget that grows public safety to more align itself with the needs of the community, deal with a couple of issues that needed to be dealt with within the school department, all while still maintaining one point two million dollars in unused levy capacity.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a pretty significant budget. In fact, I'm a little jealous, I think it's probably better than some of them I, I have brought forward, but...
Well, I'm good with that.
It is, it clearly is. I'm glad you mentioned that, Eric.
Put that in the notes, please.
No, it is, it's, it's a very meaningful budget, so...
I mean, in terms of public safety, look what, even what Ham had been accomplished last night, right? With the fire department, I don't know if you guys are...
Did they go, did they go full-time?
Going to have some full-time employees.
Really, excellent.
Yeah, that's pretty historic, so.
Three of them?
I'm not exactly sure, but it's, it was voted, yes, so it shows where the public, the public is leaning toward increased public safety. And hopefully those feelings, you know, move in the same direction that we've advocated, so...
Well, I, I don't think what's being proposed is anything unreasonable or out of line. I think it's just, I think what's happened is our community's grown, the community's grown, and our emergency services haven't.
Yeah, we're going to have our first twenty-four seven gas station open too, I mean, you know? Right?
You're back in here doing it, so that's good.
Who's the company, the Shell? I mean, I look, drive the gas.
From down south, just...
Yeah, it's down south.
Oh, have they got a name on the front?
No, I saw the color scheme of yellow and red, it just kind of, you know, without getting myself in trouble driving, it's like, like...
Won't be long, the pumps are there now, so...
Yeah, but they're not saying.
Right on to ten. Executive session, so we need to go into executive session to...
Yeah, I'll say, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
To discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding GMRC, which is from here.
If we do that immediately, we call in a three-minute recess.
We could do that, immediately follow a three-minute recess, that's all right.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Take a three-minute recess and we'll come back and go into executive. Can you come back? Just vote, just get adjourned. Oh, yeah, we got to vote.
If we're not adjourned, if we go into executive session, we're still in session?
Yes.
Because they could come out of executive session and take some time at work.